Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the November 28, 2016 meeting, Town of the Paw Council. Councilor Morse is on her way. She's just running a few minutes late. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for resolution to adopt the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Rock, seconded by Councilor Zelensky. Be resolved that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Any additions, deviations? Okay, call a question, all in favor? It's carried. Item number three on the agenda, confirmation of minutes.
Moved by Councilor Rock, seconded by Councilor Zelensky. Be resolved that the minutes of the public hearing, regular council meeting, and the committee of the whole minutes of November 14, 2016 be hereby approved to all statutory declarations being complied with.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? If we don't, I'll call a question, all in favor? They are carried. Just be a moment. All right, item number four is citizens' period. So anybody who would like to come forward and speak to us, this is an awfully good time to do just that.
Well, I'm Jan and...
Have a seat in the center, Jan.
Oh, I have to have a seat, okay.
And if you could speak into the microphone so that thousands of people watching will hear you.
So I'm Jan McDonald and I'm here representing the Paw Arts Council. And on November the 16th, the Paw Arts Council received a letter from the Public Safety Officer stating that the sign we have on the corner of the Sam Waller Museum property needs to be removed. The Paw Arts Council is asking that we be given permission to keep the sign at the present location. We have approval from the Sam Waller Museum Board to locate the sign on the museum property. The Arts Council is a registered charity and was incorporated with the undertaking to promote the arts. We needed a sign that could be easily changed to promote the many events of the Paw Arts Council and its member groups. These groups include the Ag Society, the Arts Guild, the Aurora Choir, the Carrot Valley Community Club, the Christ Church Concert Group, Homecoming 2017, Kelsey School Division Band Boosters, MBCI Arts Club, the Sam Waller Museum, the Scott Bateman Drama Club, Some Crafty Chicks, the Storytellers Film Festival, the Paw Community Choir, the Paw Music Club, the Paw Music and Fine Arts Festival, the Paw Regional Library, the Paw Square Dancers, and not last, I mean last but not least is Theater 53. Unlike other signs posted around the community promoting business for financial gain, the Arts Council sign is used only to promote arts and cultural events taking place in our community and the surrounding area. There's no financial gain to the volunteer board members. And unfortunately, there are the years I've been with the Arts Council, I haven't found a way to make money at the arts, so there's no money to be made in arts and culture. But the Arts Council is asking that under the Paw zoning bylaw 16, signs, Article 9, the following exemption be added: signs posted by a registered charity which benefits the community at large, subject to approval by council. Under Section 9, there are exemptions for no trespassing signs and real estate signs. We ask that you consider our requests. Through the years, the Arts Council has been very fortunate in having the support of the Town of the Paw, and we hope to continue to have your support in keeping the arts alive in our community. And so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Member's counsel. Anybody?
I have a question of administration. Just, is there something in particular that makes this request something that is unachievable? Or, I mean, in its essence, as it's presented, I don't particularly have an issue with what they're presenting, but I don't know the bylaws well as you guys who particularly respect the zoning.
The bylaw basically states that all of the billboard signs are only able to state the location for 90 days. This will be coming up later in the agenda also. And then after 90 days, it has to be removed off the property for 30 days. That is what your zoning bylaw states. Because of some of the inquiries and questions that we've had, and I'm sure council is aware of all the side issues we've had, we were not permitting any signs on Town of the Paw property. They had to contact the owners and get the owner's signature to authorize them to put it on their properties. In this particular case, it's in ours.
But the 90-day provision of the bylaw still applies even if it's on private property?
Yep. To be aware.
Oh, really? I didn't realize that.
So is there a, is there an easy solution to something like this? Or is this, is this going to be a difficult case of it's going to be hard to find a way to exempt, I mean, you know, the...
In all reality, we are wanting to look at recommendations to change that bylaw period.
Right.
Because this is part of our zoning, it's not an actual signage bylaw.
Right.
It's into our actual 400-page bylaw.
Which is not where it should be.
Which we said we wanted to review this spring so that we can make a lot of changes to avoid, there was that, there's certain variations, several issues that need to be addressed in that bylaw. And signage is one of them.
On a personal level, I love the sign. I noticed it one day when I stopped, and I was like, "Look at that, that's awesome. There's good information there, but when the next Home Roots concert is." But yeah, I mean, we, we have had, I'm sure you're aware that the reason the letter was generated is because we have had issues with respect to billboard signs. And it's, you know, resulted in some communications going on here about what is by the letter of the law applicable or allowable and what's not.
I believe I sent an email to all of council explaining the rationale as to why we said not on town property, but if you want to overturn that, that's your issues.
Brian?
When you say town property, what property are we talking about?
It's the museum property, which is owned by the Town of the Paw. Because of some of the issues that were ongoing, we'd made the decision at the management level to say, "You know what? We're not getting involved in fighting over who gets to place their signs on our properties." So that's why we said we are not interested in having a bunch of signs all over Town of the Paw property.
Right, there was two issues. One was the, the non, the non, people not paying, paying attention to or following the 90-day rule, and then the other one was signs being posted on town property, either with or without permission in some instances. And because the museum is town property, that provision of our discussion applies to the Arts Council sign here.
Others?
And this sign just went up, correct?
It's been up for...
It's been up for, I think, the, before the end of September, because we were, we did promote Culture Days.
But it's recently been installed.
And we, we do have permission from the museum board to have the sign there. And, and, you know, we're promoting also like their events, like the Northern Reflection Exhibit and things that happen at Culture Days. And we're, like I said, we're not a business, you know, we're not, I know the troubles that we have come from businesses, but our sign is like a public service sign. It's, it's, we're not, we're not, there's no financial gain to, to the Arts Council at all. And like I said, we, we represent a lot of organizations. So we do ask that we not be categorized in that same, you know, in the same category. And we do ask for an exemption. We are serving our community and, you know, we, a lot of us have been doing it for quite a few years. And we'd like to continue to keep the public informed of what is going on in the arts and culture in our community.
Sorry, I just had a question for Randy. What, the letter that was sent out, was it like remove the signs immediately or post haste, or like, was there...
I didn't see the particular letter, but I know people that weren't in compliance with the bylaw, they were all given letters. I think you guys had come to council just before you placed that sign, this, there was a different request that came for by the planter.
Yeah.
And council at that time had said no.
Well, I have the copy of the letter here, and we were supposed to have the sign removed by November the 23rd, but I did ask for an extension and I got it till the 30th. So I would...
So, to the 30th of November?
Yes, 30th of November, yes, which is right away.
Oh, I get what you're saying, okay. I thought the sign had to be moved till the 30th.
So the issue really lies in the fact that it's a billboard sign that's a mobile sign, which is where the, which is where the context arises for the problems. Not that your sign is a problem, or that what you're advertising or doing, I mean, it's, it's great. But because it's a sign that is in essence the same as a sign, the same structure as the sign that we've had issues with, where they're able to be placed with or without permission sometimes, and may or may not be taken care of, et cetera. I wonder if there's any...
Well, for going forward, and we're going to re-exempt the bylaw, you're asking for exemption, but we're talking about two categories of, there's private business and we're talking about public service. There's two types of, they're categorized differently, but right now we're categorizing them the same way.
I think, if I may, anybody else? I don't want to cut anybody off. I think that, you know, the bylaw came to be, the recent changes to it, because, like all things, when they come to an end, it's usually because of abuse. And so, same things are being abused, and you make, you make a decision on things. And certain things don't fall within that great big white brush category. And, you know, it's great, you know, to sit back and try and think of every possible scenario that could take place. I certainly didn't think about the Paw Arts Council advertising wonderful things in the community as something that's wrong. I think we have, at a number of locations in our community, we have little wedge-type signs that are on the sidewalk, say what's happening in this store and in this store. I think they add to the community, they don't detract from the community. I think they add to the community. But inevitably, someone pushes the envelope too far, and then you have to deal with not just one sign, but all signs. And I think it would be, as Randy had mentioned, our chief administrative officer, we are looking at revamping this entire bylaw in the next few months, next number of months. And if it's okay with you, I think what we should do, I would recommend to council is that we, we hold this over to a committee of the whole meeting and have a, have a further discussion on it. I just, because I don't think we thought about this sort of thing.
I think the bylaw for the mobile signs is, it's an agenda item for the committee of the whole meeting, which is happening next.
Could we leave our sign there until...
Well, the meeting is like happening...
It's in a half an hour.
Yeah, it's happening right after this meeting, so there'll be some discussion...
We'll contact you for, somebody will contact us in the morning.
Okay, all right, okay.
Anybody else? Brian?
Counsel can't make a decision after this meeting, so that may still leave a problem of being in contravention of an existing bylaw, which requires that we enforce it. So if we're going to, to consider doing something on a temporary basis, we may have to give some direction now or something.
Well, we, I, sorry, like, so our bylaw says 90 days. So letters were sent out that said, you know, if it's on town property, it needs to go, and that was all done without having a council meeting. So I think if we have a discussion and make a decision about what we're going to do, that we can for sure give that direction to Randy. It's not us that's going to go out and enforce it, so...
And oftentimes, we've made a decision at committee of the whole saying, "Okay, so we have a pretty good consensus here, let's allow them to do this now, we'll pass it to council." We've done that a number of times.
They've been provided an extension already. Can we not just say now, "We'll give you an extension until the bylaws reviewed sometime in the future"?
I would recommend we wait until we have the entire discussion and the entire bylaw before we comment.
I agree.
We can't, yeah, we can't pass resolution on it at this point anytime, anyway, because it's a, you know, this is a citizens' period issue that's brought forward. The normal process is an issue's brought forward, it goes into discussion, the committee of the whole, some direction comes out of committee of the whole to be taken to a council meeting. So at the time that we discuss it, the committee of the whole, we can talk about the bylaw in its entirety, the specific issue that exists for yourselves, and then along with how we deal with that specific issue, and the rollout of any decision that's made, whether that be for an exemption or whatever, however that works, right? So that can come in due course through the committee of the whole meeting that occurs next. It's just that a resolution can't be passed about it until the following council meeting.
Procedures.
Okay, well, I thank you for taking time to consider our request, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you, Jan.
You're more than welcome to stay.
Oh, yes, we know, yes.
It's riveting stuff.
Yeah. It's quite a show.
Move on then to item number five, the CAO's report.
The following is noted as it relates to various departmental reports. The museum made a presentation to Kelsey School, grade four students on artifacts and photographs about World War I and II. The museum held Giving Tuesday, Giving Tuesday event at the museum. This was a national day that was dedicated to giving back to the community for their supports throughout the years, so I know they had a coffee and kind of a come and go, which was a nice event. Pool course was held with the Recreation Connections, and all participants passed the course. We had our employees that took it. I think there was 11 people, there was a fee from Flynn-Floan, and everybody was successful. Arena's having issues with unsupervised children at the rink. I'm asking parents to please ensure that their child is in an adult's car while at the arena. This seems to happen every year, and there's reminders out there. We're getting to the point where it's going to be a strict policy. If you have no parent or adult with you, we'll be sending you home. Music Moves Program is full, this is a new program that they're offering, and it's with children and mothers. This program filled up quite quick. Recreation Director is working with Recreation Committee on Service Levy for surrounding jurisdictions. This will be coming up later in the agenda. Public Safety Officer's been dealing with signage permits, parking tickets on a daily basis. Seventy-five tickets were handed out in the month of November, and we're still not done. A lot of them are parking tickets. On-site the premises were cleaned as a result of notices sent to property owners. This is again through our Public Safety Officer. Engineering Department has been doing street sweeping, gutters and catch basin maintenance, water breaks and sewer connections, ditching and installation of culverts. The review of traffic study was prepared for a business proposal, and will be coming up later in the meeting. Preparing for winter by mixing of sand and stockpile measurements. The dock has been pulled out for the winter. The lagoon upgrade proposal and La Rose Avenue upgrades are still ongoing for the Engineering Department. Town signage inventory is being undertaken. What we have is our drafting person is going around and taking an inventory of our signs, what's missing, what there should be, where we should be having signs. This has been quite an undertaking. Christmas lights went up this week, as you can see. No complaints yet that they're early. Wonderful. Overall, the Public Works Department is preparing for winter. Posting for Fire Chief is still open. Want to send out a huge kudos to the captains. They've really stepped up in the transition and have been an amazing help. It's greatly appreciated by myself and the community. Budget and audit has been a majority, or a major priority for the Finance Department. A new cemetery software, software program is in the final stages of implementation. Board of Revision has been completed for 1617. An extensive review of policy and procedures has been done by the Assistant CAO.
Okay, any comments? Okay, move on to item 6.1, council indemnity, a sudden decrease.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rock. Be resolved that bylaw number 4556 being a bylaw of the Town of the Paw to provide for an indemnity, indemnity to be paid to Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilors of the Town of the Paw, and for the payment of servants' expenses, and to repeal bylaw number 4473 be read a first time. So, bylaw relating to us as council taking a 10% decrease in our indemnity.
I had a comment. I, I was reading the bylaw, and I think the way that it is worded, it actually...
10% in 2016?
It's 10%, it's two years of a 10% decrease, so a total of a 21-point-something decrease the way that it's worded, which I don't think was the intention. I think the intention was to take a 10% increase in one year and have that maintained until 2018?
At the end of our term.
But, but the way...
Which is 1617.
Yeah, so the way that it's worded, it says, "Council shall be paid the following indemnities in the year 2016, and effective 2017, a yearly decrease of 10% per year for a period of two years." So that would be a 10% decrease for 2017, and then another 10% decrease on top of that one in 2018.
Instead of, it should say each year.
Yeah, it should say, it should say a 10% decrease in 2017. I mean, if I'm being honest, a table might help. That simply shows 2016, 17, 18, and then, you know, something like that. Or, just simply more clear, right now it says that we're getting a 20...
Yeah, we can bring it forward as amended for the next to make that clear.
That's fine. When I read it, I did a double take, and then I read it again, and then I confused myself.
It can be read kind of both ways, I don't know, it's just not clear.
For, for the year 17 and 18, for each of the years?
It's, it's a 10% decrease in 2017, and then 2018 is the same, is the same...
You stay the same, it's not another 10%.
It's the same indemnity as 2017 and 2018, yeah.
Just, if I could, just ask on 2A, so there's no more like a daily per diem? You just, like, they'll just get your receipt from McDonald's and your gas and whatnot and bring it on in? Hotel, that sort of thing?
I've never changed. Yeah, that's the same as it's always been.
I thought there was like a daily...
No, we have that as well, yeah.
For your meals and stuff?
If you look at number D...
Is there a daily per diem? That's what I asked.
If you look at D?
A D...
Apply on the same page.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at D on the bottom going, yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah. One D.
Okay, got it, yeah? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Sorry. Excellent, all those in favor? Look at that, wonderful. Okay, 6.21, first reading of height restriction zoning bylaw.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rock. Be resolved that bylaw number 4557 being a bylaw of the Town of the Paw, to repeal bylaw number 4489 be read a first time. Basically, this is just, has to do with some of our zoning requirements and the maximum height condition that buildings not be over 45 feet.
No high rises. Any discussion? Councilor Rock?
I am a little concerned that I, where we may be impeding development if we have limitations, and I understand, I understand the rationale, is we don't necessarily want to go out and spend the dollars it takes to buy a ladder truck or whatnot sufficient to service them. But have we considered the message, the economic message we're sending out to anybody that may want to come in and build, that says, "Oh, well, pass us by if you want to build too high." And I don't think that's necessarily the intent of our action. It's just, just sort of a result.
So my understanding is that somebody could still apply for a variation...
Correct.
...to build something higher. We just want to be able to have some say, I guess, as opposed to somebody just because our zoning bylaw says that there is no limit, they can just come in and build, and we don't really have a say or have any time to prepare ourselves to get like a ladder truck or that sort of thing. So it's not to say that nobody can ever build, it's just to say that they need to have a conversation with, with administration and council before that happens.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. But my concern, I guess, too, is that assumes that, that somebody that's going to come in and spend that kind of dollars is, is going to do that and hope they, you know, like, before they make their plan, they got to get approval. So that's a big investment, and then to find out, a council may say no. And if we're not going to say no, then why are we keeping it?
Councilor Commodore?
I think that the main thing was it's a fire safety issue, because our fire department is not equipped to do high rises.
The other thing, too, I think people are going to film over 50 feet, are going to look at all the bylaws first.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not just walking and saying, "Hey, let's see if we can touch this guy."
When they bring in their proposals, you're going to be looking at it.
Yeah.
So there's this saying, multiple families, so I could have a duplex, but I can make it four levels if, if we leave it the same it is. I can make it four levels high, and now the Town of the Paw has to buy special equipment because I made a four-level duplex.
Any further discussion?
That's correct. So that's why we're saying, that's right, easily, so that's why we're saying, in order for this to move forward, we want your proposal. We'll, we'll look at it then, and you could still get a variation. It takes a month to get the variation. You're still able to do that, and it's still a process of council. Whereas right now, anybody could come in, build whatever they wanted, and you're going to be paying for providing that service.
I think when you hit 50 feet, too, you're talking seven-figure structure here.
I'm okay with it.
Okay? Any further discussion? You have a question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That was kind of in between there. Where are you at?
I'll support it.
Okay, good.
Better understanding now?
Yep. Okay, 6.3.1, first reading by law number 4558, Kelsey Rec Commission.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rock. Be resolved that bylaw number 4558 being a bylaw of the Town of the Paw, to repeal bylaw number 4471 be read a first time. So this bylaw will abolish the Kelsey Recreation Commission and change the way our Recreation Department works. This council feels that it would be more efficient and effective for recreation, the Recreation Department to work similar to the rest of our departments, where they report to our CAO, take direction from our CAO, and that's the direction that we're going to be taking at this time.
What she said?
Just point out that this decision was made in consultation with the arm of Kelsey, because they sit there as a, as a municipal funder to the recreation program for the Town of the Paw. It's not been a unilateral decision.
Yep.
As well as a conversation was had with committee members prior to...
Kelsey Recreation Commission is aware of this.
A letter was sent to them saying, "Thank you for their service," and everybody was, was quite accepted with it, yeah.
Anything else you want to add, Randy?
Nope, I was just basically saying, everybody's aware.
Counselor, is it, or Rock?
Oh, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I, I think there's been an issue with the ability of the commission to, to function on a regular basis, which has created hardships for our recreation programs and our Recreation Department. By making this move, we, we don't negate the people's participation and whatnot, it'll be through a different process, and we will be allowed to do the necessary planning and carry things out in a more effective and efficient way.
Okay, Counselor Zelensky?
I just wanted to say that we've had some discussion, and I think there's been some discussion with the Recreation Director in terms of coming up with some type of process for user groups to still have their voice heard in terms of where things are going, in terms of programming and that sort of thing. So it's going to be an ongoing thing, but there is going to be some type of process for that at some point.
Anyone else? Call a question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Carry. Committee reports, 7.3.1 intake screen tender, number T1182016.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rock. Whereas an invitation to tender was sent to two suppliers and advertised on the webpage for the inspection and repair to the water intake screen as per specification. And whereas there was only one tender received, which was reviewed by the municipal superintendent, Assistant Municipal Superintendent, and the purchasing agent. Therefore, be it resolved that council accept the tender submitted by Bus Construction Limited in the amount of $28,815, taxes included, with the monies to be expended from the Federal Gas Tax Reserve Fund.
Any comments? Counselor Rock?
Just a question with regard to when, when the work would be done?
Next construction season, is my understanding correct?
Whatever, like in the spring or...
Spring or summer.
Summer or whatever.
Late, late spring.
Probably when the river levels drop. Whatever's easier for them.
Yeah.
And this was a regular maintenance?
It doesn't happen annually, but the inspection, yeah, the inspection is, is required, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Zelensky?
I just wanted to say that even though one, only one tender was received, or one bit was received on the tender, that it was in line with where pricing was thought to have come from, so, lower than where we thought it would be, so...
Any other comments? Call a question, all in favor? Carry. 7.3.2, December meeting dates.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Commodore. Whereas December council meetings are scheduled for December 12th and December 26, 2016, therefore be it resolved that council agree to cancel the December 26, 2016 council meeting in observance of Boxing Day.
Worked twice as hard in January. Any comments? Any comments? Nice time for vacation. Call a question, all in favor?
I'm going on vacation, too.
Okay, next on the list is seven point three point three, Closing of Town Facilities.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Commodore. Be it resolved that council authorize the closure of all town facilities at twelve noon on Friday, December the twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, in observance of the holiday season.
Pretty clear? Call a question, all in favor? All right, carried. Seven point three point five, Letter of Support.
A little three point...
I'm sorry, seven point three point four, Payroll and Accounts.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Forward. Resolve that council authorize the following accounts. Pay period number twenty-two in the amount of $115,645.57. Pay period number twenty-three in the amount of $107,843.79. Town of the Paw checks, $17,895 to $18,007 in the amount of $1,141,854.49. Kelsey Recreation checks, five seven five six to five eight one five in the amount of Electronic funds transfer in the amount of $218,991.41. Paying all bills.
Any comments, questions, queries, concerns? Call a question, all in favor? It's carried. Seven point three point five, Letter of Support.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Forward. Resolve that council authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support with regards to the innovation solutions for homeless project grant funding as per discussion during the in-camera portion of November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, Committee of the Whole Meeting.
There's a letter attached there. Any comments?
We should just maybe change it because I actually signed the letter of support, the letter that's attached, not you.
By me?
So we should maybe just change the resolution so that it...
Is that okay with you, Randy? You made the motion?
In line with the letter.
Yeah, all right. All in favor? Opposed, if any?
I would just go on the record as saying I'm opposed simply for the reason that I wasn't actually present at the November fourteenth in-camera session of the meeting to discuss it. I'm not necessarily opposed to the project that's going on, I just don't necessarily feel like I can vote in favor of having not participated in the discussion, so.
Seven point four point one, Planning and Development, Variation 08-16.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Commodore. Whereas the town received the variation application from S.A.C. Hinman in Planworks Architecture. Whereas a public hearing was held on November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, therefore be it resolved that council approve variation application 08-16 to vary the established requirements to install five signs from a maximum of two and seventy square feet of sign surface from the maximum of sixty-four square feet at twelve sixty Gordon Avenue.
Good reading, Ellen. Here you go. When are you guys changing that so we don't have to talk? Any comments? Questions? Call a question, all in favor? All right, seven point four point two, Development Extension.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Commodore. Be it resolved that council approve the request for the construction of the basement or foundation for Lot Two, Plan Three Three Five Five Eight from November fifteen, two thousand and sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, as per discussion in the in-camera portion of the November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Any discussion on this?
I think the foundation is already actually being poured with cement.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, if any? Seven point seven, Gateway Kiwetin Corridor, Report from Counselor Rock.
Yes, I just wanted to inform council, as representative on that committee, I attended a meeting in Regina last week. The group sent a delegation to meet with the Minister of Highways and also with the Deputy Minister of the Economy. Two different meetings were held with regard to upgrading the highway on the Saskatchewan side, Highway Fifty-Five, and developing, continuing the development of that corridor. The, we were pleased to note that Crap Paper Industries was able and unable to send someone, but they did send letters of support to us on very short notice. And so we were able to pass those along to that Minister, the Minister of Highways there and the Minister of, Deputy Minister of the Economy. The discussions were positive. What they're trying to do and the challenge right now is when you're running the transportation route, there's a key bottleneck in the area at the turnoff to River Community down to the tree line on Highway Fifty-Five. It won't carry, it just carries secondary weight. So if anybody's loading up anywhere and wants to come across there, they have to load up to that short distance that can, the weight it could handle without regard for all the rest. Other areas of it, either through permit or through design, are primary weight capable and on our side, primary weight capable with a permit. Subsequent to that meeting and discussions, the group has been able to schedule meetings this Thursday in Winnipeg with highways and with the, whatever the Department of the Economy here is, I don't know what the title is. But, so we'll be having more and more discussions there. The target here, as was explained by the Minister in Saskatchewan as well, they have some plans. There's an alternate route they can go to work around that patch and that would be a temporary fix or potentially they could spend the twenty-three million it would take to do it properly. Our hope is that if we can find out what our Manitoba government's position is on our side of the border and are we going to upgrade our sections where there's still only nine months and temporary, then we can improve it. So, on that, the biggest change that has occurred, and Town of the Paw can take credit for being part of it, was the study that was done, the economic study that was done last winter and spring and finished in June, which gave us the tool we needed to take it to the ministerial level. The issue had been brought up and we'd gone to the deputies, but that's as far as we could get because we didn't have the data behind it. Now the group has that data behind it. The ministries and their departments now can use it to support and enhance the actions they take accordingly. So hopefully, gradually in the next little while, we'll start to see some further improvements in this. It was noticed and thanked by the people on the other side. I was the only one that was able to attend from Manitoba's side and it was noted that Saskatchewan and that there were people on this side, that we do work together as a team. That border on the map doesn't mean we're not neighbors and we can't get along and don't work together. We actually work together quite well and everybody is quite excited about where it appears to be going and getting action at a higher level. It's all about the money now and maybe with the changes in our situations and with discussions later this week, we'll see it moving forward. The Minister did say that it was his hope that, well, maybe if we can find out what's going on here through our meeting, share that with them, then perhaps the next time, and it may be as soon as two weeks into December, when the ministers cross paths, they may have an opportunity to find some time and have a discussion about it and where it's going and what decision they're going to make. I was given the understanding that at the Saskatchewan side, they can either spend big bucks and do the big section on the main highway once, or they can do a temporary detour around it, working with the RM of Moose Range. So there's a decision there they have to make and it's a dollar and a cent thing, so. Anyway, I'll be going to catching a ride with the Rod from the RM and others and we'll be going down to Winnipeg to see how we can move along on this side. Thank you.
Anybody else? So just further to that, about two weeks ago, there were a number of people that met with various levels of government through the Community Development Corporation and that was one of the topics that came up. I was fortunate last week to have a number of conversations with a number of Ministers and Deputy Ministers and that was a topic that came up. This meeting that Brian is going to, that went to on Thursday and is going to this coming Thursday indicates quite strongly that we do have the ear of the government on this for probably the first time in twenty years. And this is a, this is a great opportunity and I look forward to hearing from you on that meeting. It sounds like it's going to be very critical, very important. Okay, we'll move on then to reports. Museum Board, Counselor Rock.
There's no meetings at the last.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce, Counselor Commodore.
It's not downloading for me, but anyways, we had a, we had a very short meeting. There wasn't too much on the agenda. We were talking about the trade show and as far as we know, we're still going to go with it. And we've got one really good idea for fundraising, which will be done at the trade show, Iowa and for promoting businesses. We're going to be doing Instagram and going on to different businesses and snapshotting little pictures and see what each business has. A lot of people do Instagram instead of Facebook because it's easier and faster. And that was, that was about it. It was very short and sweet.
So just further that, I attended on behalf of the town. I attended the banquet last Thursday night honoring Citizen of the Year, Cheryl Antonio, the Business of the Year, Wadiya Jellers, and the Organization of the Year was the local girl guide movement. They're very, very powerful, strong people. It never ceases to amaze me how each and every year we find the premier drop, each and every time, so it was my pleasure to do that. The Paw Area Justice Network, no meeting. Sustainable Force, Counselor Rock?
There's no meeting.
Okay, Citizens on Patrol, Councillors Zielinski and Commodore.
Meeting will be next week. No? Yes, next week. Reported last month already.
Community Development Corporation, Counselor Giff.
We didn't have a meeting, but we did approve some action items. One was there's still an opening on the board, so everyone unanimously agreed that we need to approach PBDC for them to provide someone to sit on the board. I think that's a smart move and way to move things forward. Also, I got approval to hire some admin help so we can still pursue some minor positions or minor jobs while we're still looking for an executive director.
Was there a reciprocal move on PBDC, though, as well? Haven't gotten that far. Okay, all right. Recycling Board, Councillors Forward and Commodore.
We met on November the twenty-third last week. The operations are running normally. All of the curbside bins were distributed. There are some people that still may have not received them. Contact the center and let them know and they'll make sure you get them. There's still the odd hiccup. Some of our drivers are still learning the routes and so perhaps your block got missed one week or as such, and that happens from time to time. And typically, our guys are able to make the rounds the next day and capture those areas that they missed. The budget for 2017 was completed. It included a seven percent reduction in funding requests to the local governments, which resulted in a, was a $20,000 decrease in the funding requests to the governments collectively. And I believe the manager would be sending a letter to Jody or yourself, Randy, just kind of outlining what the request looked like and offering the opportunity for council to review the budget and/or operations should they desire. And that was a, the reduction in funding request was split evenly amongst all three municipal governments that contribute to the funding, to be fair.
Okay. Kelsey Rec Commission, one more time?
No meeting.
The Paw Community Renewal Corporation, Counselor Moore.
The meeting is tomorrow, but they do, are planning right now for the Santa Claus parade, so they're looking for float entries. The Santa Claus parade is on Saturday, December seventeenth, so get your floats together. Sam, I heard you're putting in a float, just kidding. I'm, I'm just joking. Can you drive the garbage truck?
Okay.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. Library Board, Counselor Zielinski?
No meeting.
Joint Committee Counsel, Councillors Commodore and Rock?
There won't be a meeting, one hasn't been scheduled. There's just something in line right now and when that gets resolved, we'll be having a meeting.
Okay. Kelsey School Division, Councillors Forward, Zielinski and myself, no meeting?
No, but we should schedule one soon before Christmas. We should.
I think there was going to be a tri-council meeting, too, at some point.
I have one other party on board, but one not yet. I said to remind you again last week.
All right. Citizens Period, one more time. Okay, I would call for an adjournment. Thank you.